So we will begin. Say, call the Transit Commission Board to order. And let the record reflect that all members are present. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
None? None? All right. So then we will, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is adopted. Consent items, items five through nine. Is there a motion?
Chair.
Yep.
On item nine, I have some questions that I don't know if it's appropriate in this forum.
Why don't we just want to just pull it off and then have a discussion? Because we can just, well, we can do the consent one through, or five through eight, and then have a discussion on that if you want to do that.
Yeah, I would love that, and I don't know if it's appropriate in a open or a closed session, being it's contract related.
Probably closed session, if we can pull that off.
Okay. I'd motion to approve five through eight and poll item nine.
Okay. Items five through eight, move, seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Item nine, we can, we'd have to advertise for it, or I don't think we could just close it in the session without.
Well, it depends on what you've got to talk about, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, if it's contract related.
Yeah.
Depends on what it is. It's up to you. You're the one that makes the decision whether you want to talk about it.
Yeah.
But it's employee issues we normally have gone into closed session.
Yeah, and I would prefer it in closed session, just out of respect. Nothing against Ryan, really just contract structure and making sure that we as a board have a deeper understanding of that contract.
Do you want to just make a motion to table? That item?
I'll make a motion to table, item nine, for future closed session.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's table. And then we can just, you'll have to go through that, whatever that process is, and we can just add it onto the meeting, so. No problem. Then we will, the consent agenda is done, open forum. Anyone here to speak in the open forum, or is anyone online, anyone online or here wants to speak in open forum? Last call. All right. We'll go on to general business, item number 10. Consideration to mention about procurement policy, sorry.
Good afternoon, commissioners. No? Okay. I was just looking at Gary to see if he wanted to, uh...
Oh, you don't have anything, Gary? Sure?
Then I'll talk about it. Good afternoon, commissioners. Bringing forward the procurement policy for some updates. Gary has worked very hard on the procurement policies. We normally, the biggest updates that we're bringing forward have to do with some changes that are, were brought forward with the audit that we were, the financial audit that we had in 2023. Normally, we're governed by the FTA. We stood behind that for as long as either one of us can remember. Procurement falls under two CFR 200, and under that, the formal bid threshold is $250,000. So our procurement policy and everything that we've been doing for, I guess since 2018, has fallen under that $250,000. Through our audit in 2023, the, they pulled a project that was about $180,000, which falls under our, obviously not that formal bid process. And so we kind of went back and forth with the auditors. We ended up reaching out to MINDOT and their legal counsel, just to find understanding as far as what threshold do we follow, because the Office of the State Auditor, it has $175,000 threshold. So it kind of went back and forth, you know, what do we follow, what don't we follow? MINDOT follows the $250,000 threshold. And then we were trying to figure out, why does MINDOT follow 250? If, you know, we follow either A, FTA, or B, all of MINDOT, then why wouldn't we follow those two items? Got some clarification through MINDOT's legal counsel. We are still meeting with them as far as some other clarifications that we're working on, but what we, Gary and I, ended up kind of deeming is that we're just going to go with the most restrictive. That way we're covered regardless. So we're changing the policy to the $175,000 moving forward. Auditors understand that, I've had kind of ongoing conversations with them this entire time. They didn't have any guidance one way or the other either. So we just said, moving forward, we're going to be the most restrictive. So the majority of the changes throughout the policy have to do with that. We also updated some language, and then procurement is just getting tighter and tighter. There's just a lot more restrictions coming down. They're obviously watching that closer, just like everything else in government. So there were some other changes that we had made, but those are kind of the majority. So just looking for approval for the updates on that.
First, any discussion? I think that having the most restrictive probably would be the best direction to go. Nothing, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a policy change. Any other further discussions?
Question. Once you get clarification from whomever, maybe you can go back, I guess, but I agree with what Mayor Kleist just said. I'm okay with going more restrictive, but it'd be nice if they would match up.
Right.
There's a kind of a disconnect here.
Yeah, and what we've actually asked, Gary and I have had conversations with MINDOT, and just kind of, again, we're kind of, MINDOT said that they don't have to follow the Office of the State Auditor, because they're not, we're classified as a...
Political subdivision.
Political subdivision. MINDOT doesn't have to follow the Office of the State Auditor, because they are not an entity...
Municipality.
Thank you. They are not a municipality within the state, they are a state department. So they don't have to follow those rules. We don't follow under either one of those. We're not a municipality, nor are we a Department of the State. We are a political subdivision, which doesn't fall under either one of those definitions, which is why we're...
What do, what do other authorities do?
Yeah, what does Duluth?
Duluth's policy is at 175, and they're really the only other system in the state. Like Rochester is part of the city, so they do fall under the municipality. Nacato is part of the city. You know, so like, it's really us and Duluth, and their policy is at 175, so...
Well, then you're making the right decision.
Yeah. And like I said, we're...
Just do what your auditors tell you, that's the...
Well, they're not giving us direct, like, they're like, I don't know.
Well, that's the reverse.
Yeah, that's the problem, so. Yeah, so Gary and I have been working hard dealing with that. We have another meeting with the legal counsel at MINDOT Thursday, I believe, so, yeah, we're still pursuing it, trying to get clarification, and if neither one of them will define it, then we're asking them to define it and then put it in legislation, so that somewhere going forward, it's defined for someone.
I believe we're the non-committal.
Yeah. Well, that's good, you're on the safe side of things. So the record reflects that. So any further discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that period, that policy is updated. Item number 11, discussion of green hydrogen project.
So, Chair and Commissioners, just wanted to have a discussion. Mayor Kleist and I, we visited DC last week, and we had a very productive meeting with DOT and FTA and HUD, and City of St. Cloud is transitioning, or starting a new initiative, I don't want to speak for the City of St. Cloud, but, you know, they're chiding, but...
Sure, I can give the, you know, this, and this is, obviously, it's, actually, when you say the City of St. Cloud, it's actually all of Stock Rapids, Wade Park, and Sartell, because it's all of our same wastewater, including St. Joe. So as you know, at our nutrient recovery plant, we are in the process of creating hydrogen, will be the first in the world for that type, for a municipal facility to produce hydrogen at a wastewater facility anywhere in the world. We are in a process, we've gotten a grant for that facility, for some state grants, federal grants, to purchase an electrolyzer, electrolyzer manufacturer in Minnesota. Basically, that is a device that consumes a lot of energy, but it separates hydrogen and oxygen from water. In the process of doing that, it creates heat, which is an energy source, but it also takes the hydrogen and puts that in a gas or a liquid form that can be used to fuel vehicles or buses, or any other type of energy production. The nice thing about it being at a nutrient recovery facility, it's hard for me to say it's not a sewage plant, but that's, but it's nutrient recovery plant, yeah, but the wastewater treatment facility. Oxygen is needed to break down sewage, so you have a use for it, so you're not, you know, at any other place, if not utilizing for that reason. You've got oxygen that, again, doesn't have a use, and you have hydrogen. And because it's a very highly intensive process to create the energy, at the nutrient recovery plant, we use solar, we use biomass. So all of the energy produced to create the hydrogen gas is all green energy. So there is no fossil fuel that creates it, so it's green all the way through. So you're producing the energy to then create the hydrogen. So we'll be the first to do that with the process of the, hopefully, up and running next year, and because of that, there needs to be some type of customer base, at least to start for that, especially with the grants, the federal and state grants we've got. Metro Bus has been part of that, because the Metro Bus is a, is a complete CNG operation, almost complete. You have the buses that take the North Star route, that are diesel still, but when those are no longer, our fleet is compressed natural gas. Compressed natural gas vehicles can be converted to hydrogen, but they also, the same deal, even if at, at the, at our wastewater treatment facility, you can produce green hydro, or green compressed natural gas also. You can still do the similar type process, so we can produce that, so whether we convert to hydrogen, or we look at buying buses down long-term. New Flyer produces CNG, and of course, now they produce electric buses. In the conversation with them, in fact, as soon as they realized that we were in the process of getting electrolyzer and producing hydrogen, they have a manufacturing operation in, I believe it's North Carolina, North or South Carolina, where they produce hydrogen buses. They're looking at moving that manufacturing operation to St. Cloud, where they do the electric buses. If you recall, Vice President, was it last year? Harris was in St. Cloud at that time, I think, primarily to talk about the Inflation Reduction Act, or the IRA bill, which is, puts a significant amount of dollars into electric and hydrogen. I think what's often not talked about is there's a significant amount of federal dollars in hydrogen, especially hydrogen production, which we're trying to leverage. So Metro Bus would be one of those potential customers going forward, if that's the case, especially hydrogen or conversion to hydrogen buses. As long as it takes to buy a bus, you'd probably buy a bus before you convert it, because you'd have to order. But I don't think, and we haven't had this discussion here, local, you know, but I, at least from the conversations we have, I didn't sense, and I don't think Ryan has sensed, a move for us to go electric. We put a lot of investment into CNG, and you could certainly transfer an investment into hydrogen, if that's the case. New Flyer is looking at being a partner, so they're also a partner with us. They're looking, again, putting the manufacturing operation here, so they would be a partner in purchasing hydrogen. We, as a city, are looking long-term, as we look at vehicle replacements going forward. We're, in fact, we've ordered some already in the area of CNG. We're not ordering electric. First of all, I don't even know how you get electric snowplows. I mean, we've been looking at, you know, electric fire trucks, I mean...
They make them.
They do make them, but they're very expensive, much more expensive, even though the, even the diesel ones we have are extremely expensive. But the issue of going down a route where we can do, whether it's CNG, or whether it's, you know, hydrogen, hydrogen is a little different when it comes to storage. I mean, look at the dollars we put. Now, we've invested quite a bit. Bonds are paid off on that facility, when?
Bonds are paid off. We are, we have an RFP out on the street right now for, again, that's the CNG third compressor station, the generator, that basically about $1.3 million project for the upgrades for the CNG project, plus we've got about $20 million, $27 million worth of buses here in the next two and a half years, CNG buses planned for.
Yeah, and that's the decision, I mean, we need to go, as we go forward down. Electric, I don't think is going to be that direction. Hydrogen, hydrogen or the possibility of green compressed natural gas is still a possibility. So unless we get the grants, Metro Bus and New Flyer are potentially to allow us to be able to do that. That facility, again, right now is already, it does, it's actually produces more energy than it uses, so it's already a net zero, when it comes to not only net zero in energy usage, but also carbon emissions, obviously, in CNG, that's the reason we went CNG. Still the only, I mean, we're the first. How many other CNG operations? Some are electric. So Duluth is electric, and some of the electric. Duluth has had some challenges, when we had this discussion before about electric, the challenges they've had in a cold weather state have been tough. So the update is more, just wanted you to be aware, when we were talking about looking at, especially grants, in that, in those federal legislation, there is grants for utilization of hydrogen or electric. And if we're not moving in the direction of electric, I think we should continue to pursue as whatever we can in hydrate, or clean, or I should say, green compressed natural gas, because that's going to...
Yeah, I was going to say, like, for the buses, there's, it's the low no emissions, right? So, I mean, that's where I'm planning to apply for those low no emissions for the CNG.
And we've done the same thing. CNG, CNG, we've just ordered, I don't know about the other cities, we've done recycling trucks there, we're doing CNG in those. Electric, we've done some in the smaller vehicles, but it's, we haven't gone to anything where we could even come close to looking at, you know, again, I don't even know if there's a plot, but there are fire trucks.
Rosenbauer Mike's a fire truck, but I know they're touring around the state right now, showing off what its capabilities are. We've looked at doing, I think we're doing some grants for some small electric vehicles. Think of inspectors, possibly law enforcement areas.
Yeah, and electric, and smaller vehicles are, in fact, like I said, we've got a few in our fleet, but it's tougher. And then for us, CNG, even for us, I mean, we're, it's hard for a city to have CNG unless you convert your whole operation to the storage and the garaging and all of that, which is no different, you know. I don't, I know we went through quite a bit when we did that, I don't think hydrogen is as extensive as CNG, for as far as the storage of those types of vehicles going forward. But we're going to have to come up with some. I mean, there's a talk, and I don't know if that became law, or if that was just the governor talked, I think, I think as early as 2050, to having, you know, fire trucks in the state be at electric, and maybe I just heard that wrong, but that seems like a pretty aggressive, because that would affect every municipality in the state, if you're mandating those types of things, and would be pretty significant cost, and I think would be a challenge in a cold weather state. Hydrogen, at least, they're already being used. You get heavy equipment already for that, and you can do that in a cold weather state, and it's not going to reduce any, or bring any of those additional costs in mind. I also challenge the issue of the whole electric. We've had this discussion many times at the APO, going forward, even from a local level. Those are very heavy equipment, and the more batteries you have, the heavier it is in the road, road maintenance and all those things that are, and the fact that it's hard to put those, that funding in when you're using electric versus the gas tax that still is funding our road system. I can see that in liquid hydrogen, you probably could still put a, put some type of a usage on that, but that's, that's beyond our ability, but at some point, it's the electric versus the hydrogen, so. That's kind of the update, and that's the discussion. We learned, as, I think we knew from going into it, that most of the discussion or most of what you hear is all about electric, but all of that federal legislation, hydrogen is just as equal as far as applying and getting those types of grants for that type of usage.
For the governance of this board, does St. Cloud in order, I heard you talk about getting grants for St. Cloud treatment facility, do you need Metro Bus to sign off and say, yes? Should that come to light, we would go hydrogen? Or are those two separate?
Two separate. That would be something you decide, that would be a decision that this board would make, what type of fleet you're going to go into the future. It's just, when we talk about, from the city's perspective, going in there, we have potential customers with, I mean, New Flyer has decided to make their manufacturing there too, they're not going to do that unless we, they know that there's a pipeline. Metro Bus wouldn't do that either, unless we knew there was a pipeline for energy. You need to make sure, first of all, you're producing hydrogen there. So that would be a decision we'd have to make as we, and I, and that's why when we've had these discussions about procurement already, when we've talked about, how long does it take to get a bus, and how we're budgeting these things, I mean, I think we need to even look even farther down the line, you know, especially with almost every manufacturing operation and almost any type of vehicle you're talking about, it's difficult still to get heavy equipment in particular, buses, recycling trucks, fire trucks, police cars, I mean, all those things are difficult to procure, so we need, I think, at some point to determine, you know, what is it going to be, compressed natural gas, could it potentially be hydrogen? I think it'd be a natural customer. The nice thing about, at least this board, all of our cities benefit from the reduction in costs, and if we produce hydrogen there, that's actually a reduction in long-term too, and it comes to wastewater for Sartell, Stock Rapids, Wade Park, and St. Joseph. So I think just long-term going down that path, we'll have to make some decisions be made. We're just going to pursue every grant we can at that facility, but also talk about flexibility at the federal level in the area of transportation. How can we utilize some of those dollars? How can we look at, is there something that, you know, that Metro Bus could apply for also to re-convert, or even just conversion of CNG? You know, CNG versus hydrogen right now, they're both clean, but unless it's green compressed natural gas, it's not a renewable. So hydrogen is where, at least currently, where the Department of Transportation would be, and where the administration, you know, current federal administration would be, so. It's just more of a wanting to put it on here, so there's awareness that anything, all those decisions would still have to be made by the board going down when they're starting to buy buses in the future, so.
Mayor Kleist, can I just ask, where would the, when you produce it, where would the fueling station be, and where would that...
Well, that would be right. We would have that ability there, and ideally, you know, you could, it's portable, so you could create the fueling anywhere in that type of situation when it comes to hydrogen, so. And hydrogen is, there's a great YouTube video, I'll try to find it, maybe just send it to you, because it shows, you know, in places where hydrogen, especially farm implement, big heavy equipment, it's portable. You can know different than you would if you had a big gas truck going out and filling a hydrogen combine.
So, like, we have a diesel, we have a diesel tank here and there.
You have hydrogen.
So, like, the City of St. Cloud would then hire, like, we, how we go out for bids for diesel, you would have someone in the City of St. Cloud go around filling hydrogen tanks?
Our goal was to make it, in fact, this was our discussion, because we were asking about the federal dollars, and like we all do right now with, when it comes to electricity, even, even when we're looking at doing hydrogen, who do we normally contract with? Our hydro is with Excel. We prefer down, going to a new technology, now this is city's perspective, and I would hope, I would assume even the wastewater, everybody would agree, rather than contract with Excel, we'd rather have that facility have the ability to do that itself. It would actually, then you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be going through another entity, and, you know, we've had this negotiation when it came to hydro. Hydro is not as, in the Middle East of Minnesota is not considered a renewable energy, so it changes their perspective and their outline long-term. They have to have so much renewable, so that's why they can see more solar fields, or more of the solar gardens and those types of thing. We prefer, and at least from, at least from current Federal Department of Transportation, yes, you'd have the ability to do that. So we'd look at probably having that utility, or that enterprise fund have the ability to do that, or contract, but probably not go to the point where Excel would be our, basically, the umbrella that does that. It would rather be at the municipal level. It really, for as long as, long-term sustainability, it would be much better for municipality to do that. Especially in a municipality in our area that has multiple cities that are part of our wastewater anyway, so it makes it even more of a regional thing. A customer could be, or a contractor could be, it could be Metro Bus, could be, could be New Flyer. I mean, there are a lot of other, New Flyer right now, New Flyer uses what, when they went to CNG, when they were manufacturing buses, who's the first person, what was the first entity they went to fill their vehicles with? Metro Bus, because it was faster than the one that they had. They were producing hydrogen, I mean, compressed natural gas buses, it's CNG, but Metro Bus could fill those buses quicker than they could at their, and still can. So I don't see any difference in that. If there's, if there's an ability for hydrogen, I can tell you right now, that our nutrient recovery plant already has a customer base for fertilizer. We produce fertilizer there through a contract that we have, and we also fertilize the fields that the city rents and leases out of that, so it's no different. We contract with a number of places for waste, waste to energy. Coal Spring, we use Third Street, Viking Coca-Cola, we do food energy hospital programs, so we already do that. I don't say, I think it's a natural transition, and of course, there'd be a cost, but there'd also be revenue to help push that cost. Those are discussions we'll have to make, more than likely, it might have to be involved with the state. Our utilities right now, especially when it comes to energy produce, production, would prefer probably to take that hydrogen piece too, but I just think it makes more sense if we're doing it to do it at that local level. We'll be, I mean, again, right now, this'll be a new, a new area, because it'll be the first municipal nutrient recovery plant in the world to do it. So it is a, it's an enterprise fund, that's exactly why it is. It's designed to create that enterprise and do it, so. Just, and that's exactly why we wanted to have this on here, so we can have that discussion as we move down there, down that, down that path. It's not going to, we're not going to be pumping hydrogen later this year, but I would say soon, and the more we can do that, especially, especially just the technology alone, electrolyzers, even when we started this process last year, just to do that, the amount of cost that, it costs to, just to, the equipment itself to do, has gone up significantly, but, but there are grants, and that's what we're looking at doing. The only way you really get, you qualify for these grants, no different than we do with Metro Bus, is the more collaboration you have, the better qualified, the better positioned you are to try to get some of these grants. Any other questions, comments? All right. Well, item number 12, departments updates.
I think I'll have a takeover. What do you know about travel training? All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Give you a little bit of an update as to what we're doing at the Mobility and Training Center. These are going well, and we're still being very well received and accepted throughout the communities and beyond. City of Rochester, two representatives from their transit were up today to see what Metro Bus was doing and how they might implement a mobility training center to go along with their pair transit eligibility. Just kind of a quick overview, again, for those of you, to define travel training, we do work with general public, non-English speaking individuals, seniors, and those with cognitive and physical disabilities. Travel training is done one-on-one, it's done in a group setting, large group, small group, classroom style travel training. We offer how-to ride videos, as well as online travel training virtually. We provide simulated bus riding experiences for groups, should any of your staff want to learn how to ride the bus. We will come and simulate a bus riding experience. We work and help out individuals that are new to using a mobility device, that want to utilize our fixed route, as well as our dial-a-ride system. So travel training follows a step-by-step, easy process, and each training is unique to the individual. Gary's training would be a lot different than Ryan's, all right? So a travel trainer accompanies an individual from their home to the nearest bus stop, to the transit center, and then to their destination and back. Some of our trainings are one time out, and sometimes we'll work with individuals up to 12 times till, or as many times as they need, until they're comfortable. 12 times till, or as many times as they need until they're comfortable to use that fixed route service. So kind of comparing a few of our numbers, things are starting to tick up, which is very exciting. Last year, we traveled trained 291 individuals with an increase of 72%. We're really seeing that the agencies and supportive services, community housing and schools are finally open to us coming out. We hung on to that virtual mode for quite a while, but with our service, we really enjoy getting out and providing that hands-on, getting people on the bus to show them how easy it is to ride. So in January, or January to March now, we've worked with 36 individuals. We're definitely seeing an increase in our non-English speaking. Folks that are coming, they're being referred to us through the ESL, Adult Basic Ed and Luthen Social Services, working with a lot of different languages. I have a few stories to tell, but I'll make them very quick, okay? These are just some heartfelt travel training. And again, you know, transportation is such the heartbeat to involvement, wellbeing, spiritual wellness in our communities. We recently had a young female that came from Jamaica in January. She asked when it was going to start getting warmer for a woman. It was just freezing to attend SCSU. And she literally, she had like a raincoat, level jacket on and shoes and we were out and she's here with her daughter, wanting to make a better life for herself. The first thing that we taught her was how to get to the Goodwill to get some warmer clothing. And then she was able to get her dog, her daycare to and from, her daughter to and from daycare using the Fixtral versus Uber and Lyft. So that was very significant for her. Recently, travel training with a Persian family that came to our community, they were provided with housing and food, but not their traditional way of doing things. So as soon as they were referred to us, one of our trainers went out and they were able to go out and buy the, that equipment that they needed to produce and cook some of their traditional food versus what you and I eat on a daily basis. And then a warm felt dial-a-ride story. We had an individual that, I think this is on one of my other slides, but we've recently lost cab service in the St. Cloud area. Elite Taxi has stopped serving as well as Yellow Cab is now just transporting ambulatory medical appointments. So we had a, we've had a number of people come and apply for dial-a-ride because of the transportation need. She was buying her groceries with her, her snap card through Amazon and they were being delivered, but they were all dry goods. So in order for her to get any fresh produce or meat, she needed to go beyond that and she just wasn't able to, to get that for like two weeks, two to three weeks. So when she was referred to dial-a-ride, we, we got her set up and now she's able to resume her life as normal. We continue to do a number of outreach activities. Last year, we connected with over 5,000 individuals. So year to date, we're, we're connecting already with 849. So we, we spread the word like Mr. Place there and we talk very highly about our services and the fact that we can help people in learning how to ride the bus. So I kind of took a look at what, what was new for 2023 to present, some of the new community outreach activity that we're doing, we're down at River Heights Recovery, USET, St. Cloud State Disability Services, a monthly network mingle, that's for our senior population services, working with District 742, their navigators in their schools. Avivo has got a homeless project that's moving forward. Tribe Alley, Arrive Ministries, as well as Bennett Place Senior Housing. That Bennett Place Senior Housing, that was an interesting situation. We went out to talk about our services and we had 35 people that are interested in our pair of transit service. They haven't been out and about for the last, you know, doing the necessary things, right? But now, like I said, they're comfortable and they're getting out and I'm hoping that that'll trickle down to, to our services and getting people out there and doing those things. Monthly, we continue to go into the transitional housing, working with those individuals that come and stay for 30, 30 days or so. And we do provide an overview of how to read our schedules, where our vaults will take people. And from there, if people need one-on-one travel training, then those one-on-ones or small groups trainings are scheduled.
Lisa is right in my corner here.
Committees and partnerships, we continue to participate on, very beneficial to Metro Bus. At every one of these committees, there's anywhere from 10 to 50 other committee members, right, that participate. And so we always have a networking opportunity to talk about what's new at Metro Bus, what services we provide. From there, we get a number of referrals to our travel training, pair of transit or other services we provide here at Metro Bus. Dial-a-ride, we did see an increase in 2023. 424 people were approved for our dial-a-ride service. Here I'm talking again about the law service and our taxi services. And, you know, for some people, Uber and Lyft is an option, but a lot of times the folks that come to us for our pair of transit, they're just not that tech savvy or they don't have somebody to help them out with the Uber and Lyft. So a little too complicated for them for that. Mobility Training Center, we still welcome everybody from nine until three, we're open. We've got somebody at our front desk to answer those questions about our service. People that come in that are new to the area, they want to know where our vaults will take them. They want to give us ideas on where our vaults should take them, how to read schedules, pay your fare in our dial-a-ride service. And we continue to accept all of the agency and county requests for the bus passes that go out to individuals that are on some type of a waiver program or SOE or SSI. I think that's it. Any questions?
Sure, I have a couple. Where are you seeing a lot of the referrals coming from? Any particular places or?
We, we continue to work with about 50 different referral sites, but as of late, it has been the immigrant refugees, so the Arrive and Ministries, as well as Adult Basic Ed. We've had a number of referrals. Wakosa and then the senior population. We've seen an increase.
And I was going to ask you, so if there's any age group that you're seeing the most growth from, is it still seniors yet or is it a different group?
Seniors for our dial-a-ride, but definitely middle age for younger for our Fixtral.
Okay. I qualify for senior now.
I think the majority of the board does.
You're a fair to ride the bus.
Oh, well, now you're talking.
You just looked at the calendar today, that's what.
You, I remember when we first opened the training center and all that, you obviously had an uptick in dial-a-ride. Do you track? Because I remember the sessions we had back when we had pretty significant dial-a-ride, trying to get people in dial-a-ride on fixed route. Do you track that? Were the training, training people that may not necessarily have to be in dial-a-ride that could go into fixed route? Do you track that type of training or do you focus on it?
So we, I was just kind of asked that question today. So when somebody comes in to apply for dial-a-ride, what we're really seeing is that people are coming and I would say 80% qualify for unconditional dial-a-ride. People that are being referred into us, those agencies, referral sources are, are really aware of the criteria for dial-a-ride. And so when somebody comes to us and we might not give them unconditional dial-a-ride, we'll give them conditional. And then those folks might receive travel training that we can show them how to, you know, ride the bus some of the time. And I would say out of that 80%, we probably have like five to seven percent that are denied and then those we do travel training to ride the Fixtral bus. But if, if you look at our numbers, I mean, they go, they're going up, but yet they have remained pretty flat for about 15 years, which is phenomenal. You know, that's, that's why Rochester was up today because they're seeing such an uptick and you can't handle all of that additional service because you just don't have enough service for that. So I, the travel training piece of it is keeping people off of dial-a-ride as well. A lot of times people will just come for travel training before even applying for dial-a-ride.
That's great.
Yeah.
How many people are, how many trainers do you have?
We have.
Old Ted, Gary and Ryan.
Yeah.
And when does Ryan actually do this?
We have, we're really, I would say two full-time and one part-time travel trainer.
Any other questions from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that, that is it. Do I hear a?
We'll do adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, take a moment to say hi.
Right.
Close, we are adjourned then.